Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amaditz.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobis.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Shubal.
Present.
Mr. Spikus.
Present.
All nine members are present this evening.
Thank you, sir. We're going to begin the meeting this evening with a presentation from our auditors.
Good evening, everyone, members of the public. I'm Steve Seifer. I'm a partner with Seifer &amp; Seifer. We're here to talk about the District 2014 Audit. So we have a presentation that you can follow along on the board. The important thing about an audit, it's required by state and federal law. The auditors work for the board and the public. And we give an opinion at the conclusion of our audit telling the district whether the financial statements represent where the district was at June 3rd, 2014, and how it got there. The opinion that the district received this year is unmodified. Anything less than that is a financial catastrophe. So this is exactly what the public should expect and what the board should expect. Last year, our general fund, this is the district's main operating fund, some $80 million of revenue, broken up into three categories. Locals, $58 million. State, $21.5 million. And a small amount of federal at $400,000. Expenditures, we spent a bit less than we brought in, about $1 million. $79 million in total expenses. The largest part of what we spent, $49 million, was spent on education instruction. And that's future salaries, healthcare costs, retirement costs, so on and so forth. Support represents all of the other functions, getting students through and from school, making sure that the buildings are cleaned at the end of the evening, making sure that we have principals to staff the building, so forth. Non-instructional. This is mainly athletic-type things, $1.5 million. Small amount of capital outlay and debt service of $7 million. And that represents what we owe for the projects that have been done over the years, most particularly the high school in the past two years. General fund, we made a transfer to the capital reserve fund. One of the obligations of the board is to make sure that as buildings get older, that money is set aside to properly renovate the buildings, properly do the emergency-type repairs. And this year, the board voted to put $2.6 million into the capital reserve fund. Now, if we take a look at this picture, the school district has a savings account. It's called fund balance. Right now, that fund balance is just a hair over $5 million. Now, that sounds like a lot, but it's only 5.5% of the budget that we're in right now. And what you can look at, your example at home, is what do you have in your savings account? If you listen to any financial advisor, they tell you, well, you need six months worth of expenses sitting aside just in case something goes wrong. Well, that's what this represents. School districts have a rule of thumb that can be anywhere from 5% to 8%. The state has mandated that we should have a fund balance no larger than 8%. The board has felt that about 5.5% is appropriate for Bepel Park. Every school board is different. Every district is different when they make that decision. Now, we face some future challenges, and we're going to talk about those right now. Costs related to expired contracts, that's been taken care of because the teacher's contract was settled. Health insurance rates are expected to increase possibly 7%, $600,000. Though unknown with regard to state funding. We have just experienced four years of an administration that believes the less number of school districts we have, the better. We don't know what's going to happen for the next four years. Uncertainty related to federal funding. Washington is, they're under, I forgot the term, where the automatic budget type tickens because the president and the congress can't get along. Those same budget types affect the federal funding that we receive. And the district's share of Peasor's contribution is expected to increase. And we have a chart to look at. We're going to get to that in just a minute. We have money set aside in the capital project fund. The $9.5 million represents in part the money that came from the general fund issue and money that was left over from the 2009 bond issue. There are remaining construction bills on the high school and the Neil Armstrong middle school renovation. And there are some other ones in progress. This is the one we want to show you. We have $47 million, $47.5 million of the payroll that is covered by Peasor. We have to pay the retirement contributions by then. Across the state, we have some $12.5 billion of payroll. And that's everybody in the state, all the school districts combined together. Total payroll is $12.5. When you divide one by the other, you get a fraction that we then multiply by $42.5 billion. That $42.5 billion is the unfunded retirement obligation at the state level. Now, it's kind of cut off on the bottom of this chart here, but on the back, if you kind of glance over your shoulder, our share of that $42 billion is $97 million. And there's nothing we can do about it because management of that obligation sits at the state level. Right now, we are paying in this full year, what is that number, 25.5%? Of every dollar payroll that's paid out, 25.5 cents goes to retirement obligations. That number is going to 35% within the next five years. And it's projected to stay there for the next 10 years. What we tell boards, and this is an unfortunate thing, because I'm a taxpayer to where I live. I don't want my taxes going up any more than anybody else does. But they have an obligation to make sure that the district's financially sound. And the unfortunate thing is, what's going to pay for that $97 million is going to be your taxes and their taxes. And I even have an employee that lives in the district, so he'll be paying up as well. So the challenges that the board faces is mighty. I mean, not a task I would choose to have. But what we will say to you is, Bepel Park is probably better positioned than any of our other 23 school district clients to weather the storm that's happening right now and will go on for the next 10 to 15 years. This is another chart on those increases. And as you can see, clean out to 2024 is what the Peasor's board has projected. Not a lot that can be done about this. There's a couple factors. One, there are less people paying into the system. This year, there are 4,000 less payers into the system than there were a year ago. And the second thing is the perfect storm of the stock market crash in '08 and the fact that the Rogen-Rendell administrations banned the state budget for 16 years on the back of this retirement system. And so we see the consequence. And if you think ahead, you listen to the news, what they're talking about, social security running out of money, that's what this looks like. Only, they're telling us that won't happen until 2033. But today, 2015, that's only 18 years away. So it's not a pleasant thing. The board, like I said, has made some good decisions going along. We're well-positioned to weather this storm. But we think that there'll be increases in taxes and so forth to help pay for that. Lastly, we'd like to thank the board. We appreciate the opportunity, the auditors. If you have any questions, you're certainly always welcome to call us. But thank you all very much.
Thank you. And we have another presentation this evening. Nancy, would you like to introduce our second speaker?
Certainly. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Dr. Ronald DeFalla, who is a retired superintendent and now has the distinction of being a circuit rider within Pennsylvania. And Ron has not only been a superintendent, but has a very strong business background. And he's going to tell you a little bit about the attempts to get a fair funding formula for school districts.
Thank you, Nancy. As Nancy said, I retired from public education at the end of June 2014. I was superintendent of the Brentwood Borough School District. I spent 37 of my 38 years of public education in that district. I really wasn't content to sit around and do nothing, which basically worked around the house or worked around my parents' and mother's house. So I found something to get involved with, and I'm technically called a circuit rider. There's something going on in the state, the campaign for fair education funding. My purpose of being here tonight is to make you aware of it, to tell you what my role is with it and why it exists in the first place. And actually, the auditor set a pretty good foundation for me to run from because if what I'm going to talk about gets fixed, then it makes your problems a little bit less than they need to be. So circuit riders, there are 11 of us throughout the state. We have certain circuits or IU, some of these circuit riders are IU 1 and 2. We work for five of the 50 organizations that are part of the campaign for fair education funding. The five are PASBO, PARs, PSBA, PASA, and PAIU. So we're working from August 2014 to August 2015, working with school leaders, namely superintendents, school boards, and business managers to make them aware of the dilemma with basic education funding, which I'm sure they're well aware anyway. Hopefully, use that information to promote a grand grassroots effort to have something done with it. And I have the two things, a video, which really kind of sums up the basic education funding dilemma in three minutes. And then some slides that I'll show you here that deal with some other things. So if I could get the video, that would be good.
While education funding is garnering lots of attention, the discussion can also be pretty confusing. Let's make sure we're all on the same page. While some people may use "basic education funding" as a catch-all phrase to mean 100% of state K-12 education funding, "basic education funding" with a capital B actually refers to a specific line item in the state budget. The "basic education funding" line item makes up the bulk of money that school districts get from the state each year. This year, the state will send over $5.5 billion to schools in BEF, which represents about 55% of the state's total K-12 education dollars. In addition to BEF, there are line items in the state education budget for special education, transportation, pension costs, social security costs, food services, school construction, just to name a few. Unlike some of the other line items, there are no real strings attached to the use of BEF, so districts can use these dollars as appropriate. It can be used to hire a teacher, implement curriculum, or add a classroom. So how does the state determine how much BEF a school district gets? There must be a formula, right? Wrong? Unlike many of the other education line items, such as transportation, pension, and social security, which are driven to districts based on clear and consistent formulas, there is currently no formula to distribute BEF to districts. This wasn't always the case. From 1966 to 1983, Pennsylvania had a solid formula for distributing BEF that was based generally on district wealth, instructional costs, and number of students, with some additional support for poverty and sparsity of population thrown in. In 1983, PA modified this formula slightly and named it the Equalized Subsidy for Basic Education, commonly known as ESBI. ESBI remained in place until 1992. With the exception of a brief three-year period from 2008 to 2011, in which another formula was in place, there has been no real formula for the distribution of BEF since 1992. Without a real formula, the concept of "hold harmless" has dictated that districts receive at least as much basic education funding this year as they received the prior year, driving funds to districts without regard to changes in their demographics. Over the past decade, about 70% of school districts have seen a reduction in enrollment, with the remaining districts experiencing increases in enrollment. Using "hold harmless" as a placeholder for a funding formula completely ignores these trends, as well as others associated with poverty rates, population of English-language learners, charter school enrollments, and local tax burdens, just to name a few. In addition to the underlying concept of "hold harmless," over the past few years, supplements have been added to BEF targeting additional resources to a handful of lucky school districts. These supplements have focused on an ever-changing array of factors, giving increases in funding to very limited numbers of school districts based entirely on politics and making the current distribution of BEF totally unpredictable. The current education funding situation and lack of funding formula is certainly unacceptable. And if nothing changes for education funding, nearly 50% of school districts won't have enough revenue to cover their mandatory and necessary costs by 2017, 18. With that in mind, it's time to put in place a predictable, reliable, and sustainable BEF formula to ensure that all students in all school districts across the Commonwealth continue to receive the quality education they deserve.
I think that video sums it up pretty quickly in three and a half minutes. But the campaign for fair education funding is concerned with basic education funding and the lack of a basic education funding formula. If there was a formula, districts would know what they were going to get. They could predict it. They'd be able to chart their finances much more clearly. As a superintendent, I didn't really have a full-fledged business manager until my last two years in the position. I shared it with a woman in accounts payable, which she did an extremely good job. Kind of tag teamed it. But my biggest challenge was I could never tell what I was going to get from the state. I never knew. And it made it very difficult for me to come up with any kind of new programs for students or do any kind of long-range planning. So there used to be a formula for basic education funding. There isn't one anymore. Basically, it's determinantly through a whole host of different criteria. There was a formula founded in 1966 in Act 580. That was in place until 1983. Now, oftentimes, you hear people say, well, school districts should get 50% of their costs from the state. That's where that comes from. That formula that was set up in 1966 said districts should get at least 50% of their reimbursable costs. The highest that it ever was during that enactment of that formula was 1974, and it was about 54%. Then it switched to something known as ESBI. And there are different factors that they use for that, and I'm not going to go through and read them all. But when ESBI came into play, they took away that 50% reimbursement on costs and said, well, you'll at least get what you got last year plus 2%. So this whole idea of "hold harmless" and a gradual increase. And actually, under ESBI, the highest reimbursement that was ever given in any given year was 40%. So since '91-'92, with the exception of three years, it's been "hold harmless." So every district guesses what it got the year before, and every now and then, they throw in different factors. Actually, over 20 years, there's been like 30 different factors they've used from time to time. And it's basically contingent on whatever money's available. So instead of saying, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, this is what we're going to make available for public education, they're saying, this is what we have, and then we'll figure out how to distribute it. So rather than earmarking funds, saying, education's important, all students need to succeed, every student needs a chance, we can use that money to help that occur, they're saying, well, whatever we have left, that's what we'll divide out and give to the school districts. There was a costing-out study done during the Rendell administration where they were trying to actually bring up funding for school districts based on different factors, so that if you had growing economic hardship in your district or challenging students in terms of some of the challenges they had, then you would get additional money. So there were student adjustments in there, and there were district adjustments. So that was in play from 2008 to 2011. And actually, if you take a look at how the money was distributed, every district got a base cost, and then they were given money based on geographics, their English language learning supplement, their size of the district, and a poverty supplement. That went away at the end of '10-'11. In '11-'12, if I remember correctly, districts got what they received in '08-'09. Turned the clock back. The following year, due to the outcry, they decided something has to be done. So in '12-'13, they said, okay, whatever you got in 2011-'12, we'll give you that. Plus, there's a new allocation of eight supplements. Now, you look at some of those qualifiers, and I, as a small district superintendent, looked at that list, and I thought, oh, great, I'm going to get some extra money. Didn't get any extra money. Didn't get any extra money. So in '13-'14, they say, okay, we have to do some more revamping, even though we don't have a formula. We're going to use what we gave you in '12-'13. Every district's going to get a student-focused funding supplement, and then there's going to be 12 other supplements that districts could get. 21 school districts out of 500 got those 12 additional supplements. Now, this is where people started to ask questions because it was really obvious, the 21 districts, if you trace them back, they're all tied back to people that were power brokers in the General Assembly. So if you had political clout, your district got the money. If you had no political clout, you got no money. So except for that three-year period, there really hasn't been a consistent funding formula in this state. As I said, over 20 years, there've been 30 different factors that have been used to come up with how we're going to give money out to school districts. And actually, Pennsylvania's only one of three states out of 50 that doesn't have a basic education funding formula. North Carolina and Delaware are the other two. All other 47 states have an established formula that doesn't change. Now, if you take a look at basic education funding over span of time, it looks like there might be increases there, but actually, out of all those bars, there were only three years where there was an actual increase. The rest of them were fluctuations due to inflation and obviously, the one year which was 7.5% decrease, which was only a few years ago. Pennsylvania only contributes 34.5% from the state level to local districts for their educational costs. 34.5%. Now, I saw a figure recently, that was revamped a little bit to 35.2. But the fact of the matter is, that's still relatively low. And I have other states up there for comparison. And when I saw that list initially in the training that we had back in August, I was kind of astounded because I thought there'd be some states on there that were a lot less than 34.5%. And they're not. States you would think might be less than 34.5% are heads and heels above Pennsylvania when it comes to contributing a percent of state dollars to what is needed to educate students at the local level. Now, because basic education funding was somewhat controversial and because it was kind of obvious that maybe it was being dolled out here in recent years on a political basis, Governor Corbett signed legislation to put into place a Basic Education Funding Commission. Now, this Basic Education Funding Commission, there are 12 legislators on it, and some of them have changed because of the recent elections. There are three administration officials, all of which have changed because the administration changed. They've been going throughout the state, taking testimony on what individuals think should be included in a basic education funding formula. What do we need to do to fix this situation we have in Pennsylvania? There was a hearing in October at CCAC Oakdale Campus, which I attended and had the opportunity to hear several superintendents from the area speak about what they think needed to be in that formula, as well as some business leaders and some community leaders. That commission has to have a report back to the executive branch by June 10th of this year. This week, there's an additional hearing they're holding up in Mercer County in Greenville. For some reason, that part of the state got left out. And actually, the circuit rider that represents that part of the state said, why is this? So I think through her efforts, they were able to get a hearing there. And there are two in February, I think, out in Lancaster and in that part of the state. Again, now, even though the Basic Education Funding Commission might make recommendations for what they think should go in the formula, that's not necessarily the same as the campaign for fair education funding. The campaign has an idea. And if their idea doesn't match up with what the Basic Education Funding Commission is going to recommend, then they're going to continue working on what they think needs to be done. The campaign has 50 diverse organizations in it. When I was trained in August, there were 35, so it's growing. And they have a goal of putting in a fair, equitable, reliable, and predictable basic education funding formula by 2016. I have three slides here in a row that list the 51 organizations, and I'm not going to talk about each one. But in a nutshell, there are professional education organizations on these next three slides. There are labor organizations. There are business organizations. There are faith-based organizations. There are professional education organizations. It's just a whole array of individuals, I should say, groups. And consequently, that's why it's taken them a while to come up with what they think their idea for what basic education funding needs to look like. You get 51 people at the table, I think you realize that's going to take some time. And they're getting closer. They haven't said anything publicly yet, but they tell the circuit rider something in the next couple of weeks. So there are four tenants on which the campaign's based. One is that accuracy's important. So whatever factors go into this formula, they have to adequately reflect the population of students that you're educating. They also have to actively reflect the community that the students are being educated in economically and so forth. You need stability, whether students or schools. If you come up with a formula that's always in place, you'd have a fair idea to be able to predict how much you're going to get every year. And of all the substance you get from the state, basic education funding is the largest part, part of the substance that you receive. So if there was a formula in place that didn't change from year to year based on how much was in the pot, so to speak, then educational leaders would all be able to do a better job at what they need to do. A responsibility shared. It's not only the responsibility of local school districts, it's also the responsibility of state, local taxpayers, commercial taxpayers. Now, the auditors made a very good point about the burden falling on the local level. If you had a reliable and predictable basic education funding formula in place and you knew what sort of amount you would be able to get, then you'd have to rely less on the local taxpayers. Now, Brentwood, I was fortunate over a number of years with the help of a lot of people to build up a large fund balance, which now is a small fund balance because that's how they're able to get from one year to the next. Communities that are somewhat stagnant in growth or landlocked, don't have any new growth, can only do so much with real estate taxes. And accountability is required. The campaign's not saying, give us more money for public schools. They're saying, give the money to public schools, but we'll produce for you. We'll show you that we can do something with the money you're giving us. And if we're not, you have the right to hold us accountable. So what the campaign's been doing since October, when it officially went into plague, they're trying to build grassroots support across the state for a fair funding formula for basic education and working with the Basic Education Funding Commission and the General Assembly to put this in place by 2016. Now, what's the future hold? Well, as was mentioned in the video clip, and I think your auditors kind of laid that out too, districts are going to have some serious financial hardships if something doesn't happen with the amount of money they're getting from the state. You just can't keep relying on the local level. And as it says there, 50% aren't going to be able to meet sufficient, have sufficient revenues to meet their costs by 17, 18. I think that graphic sums it up fairly well. The top line is the national averages spent for pre-K through 12 education funding. The red line is what Pennsylvania spends. The narrowest that gap's ever been was back in '92-'93, it was 5%. It's increased at 12, it's on to 8, and it's much greater now. If you could continue that graph out further. This was an interesting statistic that was given to us as we were trained. They took the school district that has the least ability for economic resources and calculated they spent $9,803 per student in '12-'13. The district with the highest resources can do the most, but they have $26,808. And then you see a difference there. Then they calculated for 25 students. When I was superintendent of the Brentwood Borough School District, if a mill was equal to $425,000, I would have been jumping out of my seat every day. It wasn't. That's more than a mill of taxation in Brentwood Borough School District. And it's probably more than the mill of taxation in a lot of school districts today. Now, I know you don't have that problem in Bepel, but good for you. Wish I had that problem when I was sitting in my chair. Okay. All right. So it doesn't have to be that way. Other states have addressed the dilemma. Maryland's done it through a commission. Actually, they went through two costing-out studies. They're in the second one right now. I think after the first one, they said, you know, we have to kick in another 41% of what we're kicking into school districts now for us to do our fair share as the state. Wyoming did it through a lawsuit in the courts. In North Dakota, a governor's commission was put together to do that. The campaign does have a website. I'd encourage you to go on and take a look at it. You can sign up to get information. Every Monday, you'll get an email from the campaign. Every Monday, you'll get an email from the campaign that'll tell you what's going on and what they're, you know, working on at that particular time. Hopefully, you talk about economic situations and basic education funding and fair education funding at your board meetings. I have resources. I've sent them to superintendents. I've sent them to business managers. I'm available if anyone would like to talk about that in more detail. I've asked every school district that I work with to give me a board member to serve as a liaison for Campaign for Education Funding. I don't think I have one yet from that one. So, I can get one out pretty soon. And then, actually, too, we're encouraging people to write letters to the editor. There were several on this area. Dr. Kerr from Norwood wrote one early on, a couple of months ago. There was this one this past week from Dr. Janet Sarden in the York School District. Those aren't in my circuit. They're in West Morning County, but I think they're making the point. There is a group of three superintendents in Allegheny County that are working on one. I saw a draft. They were waiting to get their signatures. They were gonna submit it, and hopefully, they were going to be able to get it published. So, the campaign's picking up momentum. You will hear more and more and more about it. So, again, my purposes for being here this evening were to let you know what a circuit rider was, the need for a basic education funding formula, and to make you aware of the campaign. Now, I passed out some handouts here for the board. It basically has my contact information on it. It has some information about the Basic Education Funding Commission, if you want to go on their website and see what was going, what's been going on with them, as well as the campaign. The campaign has a Twitter chat the last Tuesday of every month, which I had to excuse myself from tonight because I couldn't tweet if I was here. So, consequently, if you're into that type of thing, and I never was a superintendent, but I'm getting into it now as a retired superintendent. By all means, you know, join the Twitter chat at the last Tuesday of every month at eight o'clock, and there's some good dialogue. So, questions?
A thousand questions. You know, Friedrich Nietzsche said, "If you understand the why, you can endure the how." And you'd mentioned PA funding, school funds are about thirty-four point five percent statewide. Ours is about thirty percent.
I thought it was lower than that.
Yeah, a little less now. Almost, about twenty-nine percent. Nineteen forty-nine, the school code is where that fifty percent comes from. The school, I mean, the state is supposed to reimburse fifty percent of what we get. I think you mentioned that in nineteen sixty-six as well. We see that we're well behind that. What leverage do we have against the state for meeting their obligations along those lines? Now, it was a great program, you know, that you presented. And I appreciate what Fair Funding's trying to do, but how?
I think you just have to keep the cause out there, and you have to keep talking to people. You have to talk to your political leaders. You have to talk to your legislators, your senators, you know, the governor's office. I had, and I can't remember Nancy, if you were commuting or not, but I spoke at the superintendent's meeting in October, and one of the superintendents, he kind of took me to task. He said, you know, this is all well and good. He said, you know, I'm having all these budget problems. I'm diving into fund balance. And I didn't want to tell him what I was really thinking, because if I had the problems he had when I was superintendent, I might still be sitting in a chair. But nonetheless, what I said to him basically was, you know, if you just kind of sit back and say, okay, fine, the piece of the pie's never gonna get any larger. So, if the incoming administration at that time, which was being faced with a one-point-nine-billion-dollar deficit, which is now two-point-three-three-billion dollars, which is projected to be two-point-eight-nine-billion dollars, if you don't say something, what's to keep them from saying, oh, well, we understand there's a problem. We're just gonna take some more out of education. I mean, how much lower can you go than thirty-four and a half percent, or thirty percent, or twenty-nine percent? And if you take a look at the Constitution of Pennsylvania, the state is responsible for public education. And I think people sit back, and they're not aware of it, so they don't say a whole lot about it. I think that's probably one of the reasons Governor Wolf got elected. That was one of his big planks on his platform about doing something, funding education. So, it's not a matter of, not only a formula as far as he, the campaign's concerned, it's also about making sure you have funds to sustain that formula, whatever that formula happens to be. Is it an easy task? No. But that's basic education over here. They also have to tackle the other problems.
Peasars. Our obligations are ninety-seven million dollars. And actually, did some quick math. That's two thousand five hundred dollars per citizen, child, everybody in Pennsylvania. And it's like, they're not meeting their obligations. You know, something's gotta go.
And I think people just have to continually park and talk. There was a Call to Action Day last week, where they were asking people to contact their legislators and the governor's office about a fair funding formula. And I sent that out to everyone in my circuit. And I, you know, I actually contacted them myself. Now, I didn't get to talk to anyone directly other than legislative aides and the governor's aide, but the fact of the matter is, I think they knew people were calling. So, they react to volumes of calls. They know, they know something has to be done here. And I don't think they could hide their head in the sand and say, no, it's time. We'll just leave it the way it is. Especially when they're asking you to put out students that meet certain academic standards that are established by the state.
Sure, more and more mandates on us with less and less funding.
That's right, absolutely. It's a multiple problem. And the campaign's more focused on the basic ed, which is one part of the problem. But you're right, peace is a problem. Unfounded mandates is a problem. You know, it just goes on and on and on, so. But I guess it's like the infrastructure in this country. We just let it go for so many years and woke up one morning and said, oh, gee, everything's falling down. We have to fix it. So, you can't just keep saying, forget about it. We have to tackle it. Okay? I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate you being on the circuit.
I feel like we started the meeting off with doom and gloom. We know we'll weather these storms, but sometimes, like you said, you're kind of confronted with this straight on, and it's just overwhelming to, from a lot of levels. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December ninth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held January twentieth, two thousand fifteen, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report.
Before we get to Dr. Stark's report, I wanted to take a moment here to say a few words about our Board of School Directors. Although we appreciate our directors all year round, January is designated as School Director Recognition Month. I'd like to take this opportunity to formally recognize them and to express our appreciation. The late Robert Maynard Hutchins, an American educational philosopher and former president of Yale University, once said, "The object of education is to prepare the young to educate themselves throughout their lives." That's the bedrock of our philosophy in Bethel Park as we work every day to prepare our students to be successful, many of them for careers that have yet to be invented. Our teachers, administrators, and support staff are dedicated to that mission. But to be successful, that mission has to be supported by the members of our Board of School Directors. In Bethel Park, we are blessed to have nine intelligent individuals who are extremely dedicated to the success of all of our students. These men and women are willing to make the often difficult financial decisions, and as you heard tonight, they are increasingly more difficult, to ensure that our students will have the quality teachers, strong administrative leaders, safe and clean schools, a rigorous curriculum, and the advanced technology to prepare our students for success both in and out of the classroom. The Pennsylvania School Boards Association annually declares January as School Director Recognition Month. And at this time, it's my pleasure to congratulate, support, and salute our local school directors for their unending dedication to this school district. Our school board members generously contribute their time and their considerable talents toward the advancement of public education by establishing policies that provide the framework for our schools. While you are aware of their attendance at our sometimes lengthy and challenging meetings, they often have a great deal of homework to do before they even come to this table. And speaking of meetings, last year alone, our board met thirty times in two thousand fourteen to discuss curriculum, finances, and technology, as well as to conduct the general business of the district. And while we only take time once a year to formally recognize your commitment, we're pleased to be able to present you with tokens of our sincere appreciation this evening. In the envelope before you is a proclamation from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, as well as a certificate of appreciation from PSBA. And in the bag, and you can peek now, I understand you were under strict orders not to peek before, is just a small gift of appreciation. It is an official. Wait till somebody opens it. Bethel Park monogrammed hand towel. While they're not a gold watch or a set of golf clubs, we hope you will accept this in the spirit of gratitude and appreciation with which it is given. Because of you, Bethel Park is a very special place to learn and to work, and we deeply value your dedication, insight, and guidance. On behalf of our administrative team, staff, students, and community, we thank you for your commitment to our Bethel Park School District. At this time, I ask the audience to join me in a round of applause in recognition of our board members during School Director Recognition Month, two thousand fifteen. May you use your hand towels in good health.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Stark?
Well, if you thought the meeting got off to a gloom and doom start, we have so much good news, you're going to have to sit back and put your feet up. Three Bethel Park High School seniors, Cassie Brown, Abby Hartzell, and Kelsey Tischler, jumped at the opportunity to get some real-world work experience when they partnered with the Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce to assist the Chamber with its shop local campaign. The three girls designed online surveys for consumers and Bethel Park businesses to gauge the public's interest in shopping local and to find out what local businesses need from the Chamber. The girls also partnered with the Chamber to host a Santa breakfast The girls also partnered with the Chamber to host a Santa breakfast at Bethel Park High School, where 92 children enjoyed lunch, crafts, and a visit from Santa. The centerpieces of the luncheon was the 10 artificial Christmas trees in the high school lobby, beautifully decorated by several Bethel Park High School student groups. The trees were generously donated by Bethel Park businesses, and the decorated trees were raffled off, with the money raised going to the individual student groups. Cassie, Abby, and Kelsey are members of the DECA group at the high school, and they, along with their sponsor BPHS marketing teacher Emily Smaller, will give a presentation at our March regular meeting about this valuable partnership. Thanks to Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Connie Ruhl for providing this meaningful experience for these students. This year, 100 Bethel Park High School students competed at the DECA District Career Development Conference, and 65 students, based on their performance at the local conference, qualified to compete at the DECA State Conference, which will be held in Hershey in February. Students could finish as high as fourth place at districts to qualify for states, and as you can see, all of their names are before you. At this time, I would like to extend a special congratulations to first-place winners: Sabrina Totalius, Valerie Wangren, Corinne Swager, Brandon Drobaski, Tara Nath, Sean McLean, Harrison Zelt, Maura Ellsworth, Natalie Lalama, Gavin Campbell, Shane Fiorentini, Haley Reed, Christine Dunlap, Rachel Gilliam, Jared Robbins, James Smith, Tasha George, Carolyn Vanna, Emma Bruno, Justin Nath, Ethan Wodowiac, Alex Yarky, Riley Frank, and Haley Seberger. Good luck to all of our DECA competitors at the state level. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School seniors Julianne Rosa and Harrison Zelt as their December Students of the Month for their efforts to create and bring to fruition a program they called "Verbalize for Victory." These two Student Council students recruited their fellow SGA members to record children's books on the school's television studio that were turned into video books and transferred to DVDs before being taken to Children's Hospital to give to the patients there something to do while they recuperate. Each month, the Rotary Club recognizes outstanding Bethel Park High School students for their commitment to school and/or community. Congratulations to Julianne and Harrison for this marvelous idea. KDKA Radio's Mike Pintek paid a visit to Bethel Park High School in December to broadcast one of his afternoon talk shows from the large group instruction room as part of his high school enlightenment tour. Bethel Park High School students shared their thoughts about several current events topics, including racial unrest in Ferguson and New York City, immigration, removing your hat during the playing of the National Anthem, and the stresses of being a senior. The high school jazz band, Top 21 Choir and Orchestra, were there to provide music in and out of the commercial breaks. One caller said, "After listening to these students, I know the future is in good hands." Bethel Park High School students and Mrs. Perot's adaptive technology classes learned the value of recycling and, at the same time, improved their fine motor skills by creating beautiful snowman hat centerpieces using cans they recycled from the school's cafeteria. Before taking their creation home to their parents, the centerpieces graced the tables during the municipality's annual Senior Citizen Gold Card Christmas Luncheon in the high school cafeteria. Congratulations to Nolan Rosemeyer, Lucas White, Anthony Valdecara, Melissa Sabo, and Jeremy Cutler for doing a terrific job. Several of our high school and Independence Middle School musicians and vocalists successfully auditioned and were selected to participate in several concerts sponsored by the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association. Representing Bethel Park in the district band concert that was held earlier this month were Bethel Park High School students Chris Bright, Daniel Galis, Corey Crowboth, Matea Pranjic, David Ullman, and Joe Wasco. At the district band concert, five of those musicians were selected to play in the upcoming PMEA Region Band Concert. Congratulations to Chris Bright, Corey Crowboth, Matea Pranjic, David Ullman, and Joe Wasco. Seven Bethel Park High School musicians will play in the district orchestra concert that will be held next month at Penn Hills High School. Congratulations to Matlin Baranty, Joe Beaver, Chris Bright, Samantha Smith, David Ullman, Jonathan Unger, and Joe Wasco. Bethel Park High School was proud to host the PMEA District Chorus Concert earlier this month, featuring 172 vocalists from 60 high schools in a five-county area, including 20 Bethel Park High School vocalists. Congratulations to Jefferson Belback, Joe Campion, Peyton Capristo, Josh Como, Marie Dykstra, David Erzen, Nathan Harold, Anna Henkels, Michael Crutt, Tyler Kurzenowski, Sebastian Lys, Emmy McCohus, Shannon Musser, Patrick Raymond, Daniel Sidor Franzac, Joe Sarafini, Adrian Slater, Dan Spanner, Matthew Tarbert, and Alexandria Zallow. From that group, 15 of those vocalists were selected to move on to the Regional Chorus Concert, which will be performed next month at Trinity High School. Congratulations to Anna Henkels, Marie Dykstra, Adrian Slater, Alexandria Zallow, Shannon Musser, Emmy McCohus, Joe Sarafini, Tyler Kurzenowski, Patrick Raymond, Michael Crutt, Josh Como, David Erzen, Joe Campion, Matthew Tarbert, and Nathan Harold. Fifteen Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School musicians will participate in the PMEA Junior High District Band Concert, which will be held in April at Bethel Park High School. Congratulations to Liam Brusowski, Benjamin Daven, Bruce Deal, John Deputaloff, Alex DeRose, Noah Gearhart, Zach Janus, Catherine Kyms, Anthony Lukidi, Will Miller, Tyler Patrossi, Connor Remington, Tyler Simpson, Alexander Sedini, and Teresa Stolpa. Four Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School musicians will play in the PMEA Junior High District Orchestra Concert, which will be held in April at Pine Richland. Congratulations to Emily Cowser, Kylie Flood, Lily Wilson, and Janelle Wu. The students on Team 8C at Independence Middle School showed how much they care for American servicemen and women by sending them bags full of supplies and treats. Tables were set up, filled with all kinds of food, socks, toiletries, DVDs, candy, and toys, and the students worked their way down the tables to fill up over 100-gallon-sized bags with all kinds of goodies for the troops. The bags were sent to student Cassidy Kelly's cousin, who is a Navy SEAL. The students obtained the items by collecting $595 in one week and by approaching local businesses for monetary and item donations. This is the fifth year this team has performed a holiday service project. A group of 25 Independence Middle School students stayed after-school to make 25 fleece scarves and donated them to the South Hills Interfaith Ministries. They will be distributed to needy people in the South Hills area through Shim's clothes closet and food pantry. The students are part of the newly-formed Family and Consumer Science Club, and every Tuesday, these students stay after-school with teacher Heather Fontana to work on service projects. Besides making the scarves, they also made Christmas tree ornaments for the tree that is in the school's cafeteria and baked Christmas cookies to brighten the holidays for Bethel Park families. Mrs. Fontana is extremely impressed with the students' commitment to helping others. The holidays were a little brighter for needy South Hills families this year, thanks to more than $8,000 worth of presents purchased for the South Hills Interfaith Ministries Angel Emporium by Neil Armstrong Middle School sixth graders. For the past 15 years, Neil Armstrong Middle School has supported this community-based endeavor by raising money and shopping for Christmas presents that were distributed to needy families in the South Hills through Shim. Students shopped in small groups to buy for an assigned demographic, such as infant or teen, and then they delivered their gifts to Shim so they could see exactly how the gifts would be distributed. Shim is grateful for the support of Neil Armstrong Middle School because NAMS is the largest supporter of the Angel Emporium. According to Anna Cullen, Shim's Community Relations Manager, Neil Armstrong Middle School once again went above and beyond the call of duty with their generosity and enthusiasm for this program. The number of items donated to Shim's Angel Emporium was nothing short of amazing. Thank you to everyone who financially supported this project. This year's Neil Armstrong Middle School Charity Carnival raised over $4,500 for the South Hills Interfaith Ministries and the Bethel Park Adopt a Family Program. This was approximately $1,000 more than was raised last year. The students had a great time participating in a variety of games and activities, including the favorite pie in the face, duck race, skill games, and nail painting. All games were 25 cents to play, so you can see the students played a lot of games to raise that kind of money. It was a fun way to raise money for organizations that support Bethel Park families. Thank you to students, staff, families, and businesses who helped to make this year's charity carnival a huge success. William Penn third-grader Grace Skolniak was the winner of the Third Annual Bethel Park Third Grade Spelling Bee, sponsored by the Rotary Club of Bethel Park. Grace competed against 54 other spellers from our elementary schools to win a $200 Toys R Us gift card. Finishing in second place was Washington's third-grader Dylan Prindle, and in third place, Memorial's third-grader Hersh Cambly. This year's bee was extremely competitive, and I was worried we might run out of the 1,450 words I had prepared for this year's competition. These students were that good. We thank the Rotary for their assistance with this event that showcases the spelling talents of our outstanding third graders. Memorial's fourth-grade students participate in a paid-forward program every year to encourage them to develop a sense of community service and giving back. This year, the students adopted former Bethel Park High School graduate Marine Lance Corporal Brian Rock and his colleagues. The students wrote to Lance Corporal Rock and sent him and his fellow Marines care packages. Lance Corporal Rock was back in Bethel Park over the holidays, and he stopped at Memorial to personally thank the students for their generosity and to answer any questions they had about life as a Marine. Bethel Park High School welcomed five new inductees into its Great Alumni Hall of Fame. Congratulations to Andy Amrind, Anthony Daniels, Rebecca Macizak, Sergeant Todd Patterson, and Jessica Wright. You can read their biographies on the high school's alumni webpage, and we encourage you to take a look at these five outstanding individuals and their accomplishments. The Hall annually recognizes those alumni who have significantly improved the life of others, contributed significant volunteer or community service, or achieved significant advancement in their professional field. Last page. The Bethel Park Athletic Hall of Fame also inducted six new members for their outstanding athletic careers in high school and beyond. Congratulations to Pete Qualina, Sarah Dunlevy, Cheryl Love, Deanna Parks, James Roy, and Nate Timmons. Pete Edwards was also presented with the Distinguished Contribution Award. You can read about all of these individuals on the Athletic Hall of Fame webpage, which is linked to the Athletic webpage. Thanks to $5,000 from the Highmark Foundation's Creating a Healthy School Environment Grant Program, the Bethel Park School District is excited about implementing the Go Slow Who program in all of our cafeterias. The program is designed to promote healthy eating in the cafeterias and at home through available nutritional choices. Students will see charts in their classrooms and the cafeterias, listing foods in the "go," almost-anytime foods, "slow," sometimes-and-eat-less-ofthin foods, and "whoa," once-in-a-wild-special-occasion foods. These categories are so they can better understand which foods are healthier for them to eat. To help students make healthy food choices, there will be free food sampling scheduled for all the school's cafeterias. Submitting the application on behalf of the Bethel Park School District were Food Service Director Joe Consul-Magnow and Independence Middle School Nurse Lori Kelly. Just a reminder to all of our parents whose children will be five on or before September 1st, 2015, that the district is currently accepting kindergarten preregistration forms. The forms are available at all Bethel Park Elementary Schools and online on all the elementary schools' websites. Parents should complete the forms and return them to their child's school as soon as possible in advance of the March kindergarten registration dates. Once the preregistration information is turned in, parents should either pick up a kindergarten registration packet or download the forms off of the elementary school's webpages under New Student Registration. It is important for parents to preregister their children at this time and register their children in March so we can adequately plan for the upcoming year. And that concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you for sharing some good news with us this evening, lots of it. Student government doesn't look like anyone's here. PTA, PTO council?
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Tracy Fedco, the PTO Council co-president, and I'm going to report on behalf of all the schools, and hopefully it's more good news. I think it is. We'll start with elementary. William Penn PTO did a little something special for the holidays this year. In addition to their parties that were on the 19th, they handmade each student a snowman ornament that was given out before the winter recess, and they also popped popcorn for the healthy snack for the parties. William Penn also just started their William Penn Pacers Club to participate in the Kids of Steel Program associated with the Pittsburgh Marathon. I think that means all of the elementary schools in Bethel Park now have a running club, so that's great news. The students will be running on pre-planned days of the week inside the multipurpose room until it gets nice. William Penn also kicked off their Character Trait Education Program this year by asking all students to wear a special color that coordinates with the trait of the month. January's trait was patience, and the corresponding color was blue, so students wore blue on Friday, January 9th to show that they had patience, and they learned about those traits. PTO has started a Pittsburgh popcorn fundraiser, and I think that's new for them. They had to change their most recent January PTO meeting that was on the 26th last night to Monday, February 2nd due to the cancellation of school, so that will be held Monday, February 2nd at the school in the evening at 7:00 p.m. Memorial Elementary has just had a Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair. The children had a great time. They had raffles, storytime, and they actually got to practice reading books to therapy dogs. Memorial also just started a Read-A-Thon, where the kids go out and get sponsors and read books and raise money for a cause, so it's definitely a reading month there, as well as at George Washington Elementary, where they kick off their accelerated reading program on Friday, January 30th. The theme this year is Hats Off to Reading in honor of Dr. Seuss, so the students were asked to wear their favorite hats on Friday to kick off the program. Washington is doing their spring fundraiser. It's Sarah's Candy mixed-bag designs and pies from the pie shop. The students there will be celebrating Washington Day on February 16th with an assembly from Josh and Gabe and by wearing red, white, and blue. And my students are from Washington. The second graders also memorize a song where they know all of the presidents, so it's amazing to hear, and they can still rattle it off like that. I don't know them, but my kids still remember that, so... Students at Washington will be participating in the Jump Rope for Heart Jump-A-Thon on February 24th, and all money raised will go to the American Heart Association. Also on that evening, they will have their annual health fair, where they invite vendors to come in and talk about different services. The kids get to participate in healthy activities and learn to jump and things like that. All proceeds go to American Heart Association as well. Ben Franklin Elementary had their science fair on January 21st, and they had an excellent turnout with kids participating in a wide range of projects. Ben Franklin has partnered with the Bethel Park Cheerleading Boosters to raise money for Special Olympics this year. The kids will be bringing money in the week of January 26, Monday's pennies, Tuesday's nickels, Wednesday dimes, Thursday quarters, and Friday dollars, and this will all tie into the Cheerleaders' Annual Spring Fashion Show in March. Lincoln Elementary had a school spirit day on January 16th, and it was a mustache day, so I'm sure the kids had a ball with that. They're holding their annual talent show on February 6th, and that will be at the Lincoln Schools. All elementary schools are going to be enjoying the Valentine's Day parties on February 13th. That's a Friday. Okay, for the middle school, IMS is starting the Bold and Gold Programs. Gold is girls-only leadership development, and it was held at IMS this past Friday. There was 105 girls in attendance, and they spend time with the high school girls. They learn about getting ready for ninth grade, participating in things that are going to happen at the high school. They play video games, play dodgeball with Mr. Minch, the principal, and they attend breakout sessions and listen to the high school girls. It's a really good program. The Boys Program will be held on Friday, February 6th. The registration deadline is this Friday, January 30th. So if anyone has any questions, they can contact Heather Fontana or Mr. Spelaris at IMS. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Solicitors' report?
I have nothing this evening to report.
And we didn't have any committee reports, right? Public comments on agenda items, agenda items only. Hearing none, we'll move into business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are two items this evening under curriculum, like any held. Hearing none, I move, number one, the school-sponsored overnight educational activity for FCC LA State Leadership Conference, and number two, professional development.
Second.
Items one and two under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Ruhl.
There are 15 items under Personnel. Is there any that anyone would like to have held out?
I would.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would.
Which?
Item number two, specifically the head football coach position.
I would like number five, six, seven, 12, and 15. Five, six, seven, 12, 15.
Five, six, seven, 12, and 15. So you want those moved separately? You want those individually, so you can move the other ones in them?
Five, six, seven, 12, 15, and two?
Two head coach.
Okay.
So you can move two, all except for?
The head coach position, right? Okay. I move items... Items one, all of two with the head coach position. Three, four, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, and 14, under Personnel.
Second.
You second, and Mr. Amadis? Does anyone else have a... I have no 11 on mine. Okay, so it's 10 and then?
10, 13.
13, that's what I have, okay. So, items. One, two excluding the head football coach, three, four, eight, nine, 10, 13, and 14 have been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. And let the minutes show that there is no number 11 under Personnel, okay? Thank you. Mrs. Ruhl. No, just go to number five now.
All right, I move now that...
Or, no, you'll have to move to football coach, I guess, first.
Right.
Can I request the voice vote? My order, don't it? I'm sorry.
Let Connie make the rule. Let Mrs. Ruhl make the motion first.
I move that we accept item two, head coach, under item two.
And I need a second for that item.
You need a second.
Second. Okay, item two, head coach football, has been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any discussion of this item?
Just generally, I think the program needs a new direction, and that's all I'm going to say at this point, so I'm going to ask for the head coach position.
Do we need to do a voice vote, or can we... I can just do a roll call vote, or can I just do a voice vote and we can?
Either way.
Record it that way? Okay. Start that way. Okay. I'm just going to do a voice vote, then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that carries seven to two, with Mr. Schubel and Mr. Means as my dissenting votes on that one.
Next, I move items three and four.
Five, we're up to five now.
That's right.
We already moved three and four. Yeah, we got those in.
Five, to five.
Yeah, we had out five.
Five.
Second.
Item five under Personnel has been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have, excuse me, I have a question. I just want to know that there's definitely a plan in place to replace these two valuable people from the high school, and there's a timeline that's sort of figured out, because for them, for the high school to lose two people like that, I just am concerned. So I just want assurances that there is a plan with a timeline to replace them.
I can tell you that we have first-round interviews for the assistant principal position this week, tomorrow is the minute.
Okay. And then, I just have a question about the other one. Is that filling a spot, the full-time, the person moving to full-time from part-time?
I believe...
Is that a new, is that a new position?
For the classified position.
Yes.
I... Ms. Sutton?
It's not a new position. It was one of the...
Okay, so now we have an open position at the high school?
Right.
Okay. I was, I just didn't remember the whole aspect.
Any other questions or comments on item five? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Mrs. Ruhl, we're up to number six.
Item six is Appointment of Personnel. I move that on our Appointment of Personnel.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ruhl, I would request...
Just a second, let me just... Item six has been... Item six has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on item six?
I would request that item B1 be held out separately on that.
B1?
B1. Six B1.
Okay, we held out all of six, so now you want me to separate out? You want her to separate out six B1?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a que, I have a question about B2. Is that a retirement, a resignation, a?
Retirement.
That is just happening soon? Okay.
Okay. Okay, so. Yeah, or just re-motion and if you're okay, restate it, yeah.
Okay, we will move on six. A, one and two. And C, one and two.
And D.
And B2.
B2. And D and E, one and two.
Yes.
I'll second that again.
Thank you.
So we have basically now moved on all of six, except excluding six B1. Any other questions on all of six excluding B1? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries nine to zero.
Mrs. Cook, can I introduce, Mr. Patterson is here?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson is going to be our new principal at Neil Armstrong. He's here tonight. Welcome aboard.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd also like to acknowledge that we also hired a Ben Franklin principal tonight in these motions. This is Teresa Ader Demont, and she's, she's working in Littlestown. So it was quite a distance for her to travel to be here tonight, but we also welcome her.
Thank you.
Now I move item six B1.
I'll second that as well.
Item six B1 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
That motion carries six to three. Mrs. Rule, we're up to seven, I believe.
Okay, we're up to seven.
Mrs. Cook, I apologize. I didn't get the no votes on that.
The no votes were Mrs. Dobus, Mrs. Buckley, and Mr. Means. Okay, Mrs. Rule, we're up to number seven.
I move on item seven.
Second.
Item number seven has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question or comment. First of all, I sincerely appreciate all the work that Dr. Stark has done and is doing in the district. I'm not convinced that this is, this is a necessary position that we can afford. Given the fact that we have to also hire another principal. And it means hiring another principal, so I have concerns about that. Not about Dr. Stark's work, but about the financial aspects of hiring another principal and having two full-time curriculum directors. At a time when we're, we seem to be needing principals.
Noted. Any other questions or comments on this?
Mrs. Rose, could you please talk about the increase in the amount of documentation required by the state?
Where to begin? I should have made a list in advance. Right now, our curriculum directors are being tasked with revising our K-12 curriculum to meet the Common Core. The testing requirements have increased from the PSSAs to now adding three additional Keystone exams for our secondary level. Also, which our directors of curriculum are responsible for preparing students. In addition, the state has begun a new teacher effectiveness evaluation system that requires extraordinary documentation on the part of the principals. And our curriculum directors have been assisting our principals in preparing for that inevitability. And then, on top of that, the most recent piece of legislation was the new principal effectiveness evaluation, which our directors of curriculum are directly responsible for. There, I'm sure there are more, many more. But those are the primary impetus for requesting Dr. Stark during this period of transition to be a full-time director of elementary education.
Thank you.
Maybe the thing is, since this is all new coming down, that we can just see how it goes and see what our needs are going forward. But I think for now, since everything is new and all the documentation, we need to handle that first and see what, what it does entail and what we do need.
And I think administratively, we have held the line in Bethel Park. We have, quite frankly, our administrative team runs lower, with less employees at the helm than many of our neighboring and, and school districts of like size. And Dr. Stark was kind enough to work in a slash or dual position for a number of years. And it just has become apparent, as Mrs. Rose just pointed out, that the amount of work involved in that guise has dramatically increased and continues to increase right now. And as Mrs. Rule said, I think we see that, you know, to pull this position out and have it be one position as opposed to a slash position, that this is the time that we are needing that support here. Any other questions or comments on item seven? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That item carries eight to one, with Mrs. Dobus dissenting. Mrs. Rule?
I move, I move that we approve item 12.
Second.
Item 12 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item?
My only question is that this is a position, correct, if I'm correct, that will be held until we hold interviews for this position? That's what I understood from last?
Until a candidate is hired?
Hired, yes.
For the assistant principalship, correct?
Okay, so this is, this is an interim position that we're going to interview for? I mean, we're going to interview for?
It is an interim position until we fill the position of assistant principal of Neil Armstrong.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on item 12? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Mrs. Rule?
I move item 15.
Second.
Item 15 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a comment. I understand our need to create continuity of care in terms of our superintendent. I certainly appreciate everything that Nancy Rose has done over the years and has agreed to continue to do. I know that when I was a teacher, we had two interim periods when we had a superintendent because of someone leaving, that we didn't have any real leadership. However, I believe that once we find a new superintendent, a process that we're going to be starting soon, looking for someone, that upon finding someone, that it is not necessary to continue having Nancy work as our superintendent through June of 2016. I was also in a situation in the school district where we kept a superintendent on after we hired another one, and it was not necessarily a great situation because of that. I think that with the cost of this particular extension, that when it, when we find a superintendent, that we should end it. We're talking about money here with the district and the fact that we are going to be needing money, and this is a significant amount of money. We have two contracts that have not been settled yet, the secretaries and the paraprofessionals. And I just am very cautious about double spending for two superintendents during, maybe just a short period of time, but it could be a longer period of time. But I certainly appreciate Nancy, everything that you've done, and you're agreeing to stay on.
I would just like to say, as probably the longest member serving on the board at the moment, that I have been through a few superintendent hires. And believe me, there was a time that it took us two years and three interviews of the same person before we ended up hiring them. We went through three interim superintendents, the school district. It was not a fun time. Each time we've done this, it's, it's been difficult. And the superintendent pool right now is not very large. Many of the schools and the boards that I've sat on, their superintendents coming on board now are like 30 years old and with very little experience. So I do not look for this to be a much faster process. In fact, it may be a little harder, given that the pool has dwindled so much. And we're going to make every effort to do that. But the last thing we want to do is go through another cycle of interim superintendents. That's not good for the staff. It's not good for the district. Our hope would be that we will find someone, but I do not see us being able to find someone within the next four, five, six months. It's going to take, before we even get started, this is already starting in February, till you get your notices out there and you get your different people in, you're already talking probably spring before you're really even beginning to get some notable candidates that are interested. That's just my, my take on it.
There is verbiage in the contract also for mutual termination. You know, that could be, it certainly can be utilized.
As well as special projects, and we are always in need of study in many, many special projects in this district. As I said, I, quite frankly, I don't believe we're top-heavy in administration, no matter what anyone wants to argue. And if you look at the percentage of salary that's, that is outlaid within all of this, you can be penny-wise and pound-foolish too. And I personally am thankful that Nancy has agreed to delay her retirement in, in order to help us because I, along with Connie, sat on the board and we went through those times of interim superintendents. And the superintendent search in the pool was quite a lot larger than it is currently. And it still took a lot longer than any of us anticipated for the search. Yes, Mr. Means.
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Dobus in principal. I mean, the money's a concern, but I think the worst possible scenario would be to feel pressured to pick somebody before you were ready. The superintendent's the most important person in the school district. And if you're forced to pick somebody that you're uncomfortable with simply because the contract's running out, that could be pretty bad.
Miss Cook, yeah, just to add on that, again, I was on the board as well during that time, and the process was long. You not only have to coordinate the superintendents to come in for the interview, you have to coordinate a time when nine board members can be there. Because this is not a decision you want to make with two or three or four board members. And when you finally find someone that you want, you don't want to bring that individual on with a five vote or a five to four vote. You want to bring that person on with a unanimous vote. And so it will take some time to find someone that all nine board members are in agreement with, or almost all nine. And it will take time to coordinate that schedule. And as Dr. Campbell said, there are contingencies that if we do, and if we are fortunate enough to find someone quickly, that mutual termination can occur if that, if that is the cause. So I think we have our basis covered in regards to that.
Any other questions or comments on item 15? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries eight to one, with Mrs. Dobus opposing.
And I believe that ends Personnel.
I believe that does. Thank you, Mrs. Rule, and thank you all for hanging in there with us and getting all those correct. Facilities and Service Committee and Mr. Spicuzza, you have it easy this evening.
Unfortunately, I only see one item under Services Committee this evening. I'm a little disappointed, but I'll move forward. I move the following item. Construction Management Services, the Board of the School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to appoint David Disk to provide construction management services related to the mechanical renovations at Washington Elementary School as part of his proposal for pre-construction through the completion of the project.
Second.
Item one, under Facilities and Service Committee, has been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on this item?
I thought Dave was part of the staff. I think, I think he's been to as many meetings as I have.
Yeah, I just have a comment. Having known Mr. Disk through the construction process of New High School, I certainly will be supporting his, his role in this position. Dave did a wonderful job. There were some superstars involved in that, Matt and Buzzzy being included on that team. Dave certainly was included on that team also. I'm delighted to have him as part of the staff.
Terrific. Let's vote him in then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Welcome back aboard, Mr. Disk. Finance Committee and Dr. Campbell.
Madam President, there are 10 items to be presented to the Board from the Finance Committee for approval that don't have much drama attached to them. I move that item number one, December 2014, January 2015, salaries and bills, number two. November, oh, I didn't even ask for?
I want to hold out number eight. Hold out number eight.
My esteemed colleague on the other end of the table, holding out number eight. I have a feeling we're going to talk about replicator, 3D printer costs. Being the case, I move that item is number one, December 2014, January 2015, salaries and bills. Number two, November 2014, financial report. Number three, December 2014, financial report. Number four, budgetary transfers. Number five, 2015, 2016 proposed preliminary general fund budget. Number six, post-June 20th, or 30th, 2014 budget transfers. Number seven, athletic training services and agreements. Number nine, approval of student services contract. Number 10, items declared unused and necessary, be approved by the Board.
Second.
Items one through seven and nine and 10 under Finance Committee have been moved by Dr. Campbell and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Dr. Campbell?
Madam President, I move that item number eight. Approval of the purchase of informational technology and equipment be approved by the Board.
Second.
Item number eight, under Finance, has been moved by Dr. Campbell and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have one question on the 3D printer. In, in going over my notes, is this the second 3D printer that the high school will now have? They have one in the Technology Department, and they're going to have now one in the library? Dr. Jansanti, would you please?
That's correct.
Okay. So there, so the one in the Technology Department is being used to such an extent that we need a second one?
No, the one in the Technology Department is classroom-specific. The one in the library, we have utilized by, just like a lab, where people can, can make use of it. Any department uses it. The other one's tied up for a program.
So difference in accessibility and functionality? I see. We had a concern also as a Board as far as cost per semester for the product, the spool to get and feed the printer. We were told estimated about $25 a spool, about three spools per semester. All right, we're going to, the Board would like to certainly revisit that down the road and watch that as we see, have concerns for explosive exponential growth in the use of the spool. So that is something?
So in other words, Dr. Jansanti, we don't expect to see you driving a 3D-created vehicle.
Will, will there be in-service to teach the?
I under- see, there was an article in Sunday's paper too about the 3D printers and some of the legalities around it. So I, I think we should watch that with the students and whatever, be on top of that.
Towards that end, is administration having concerns about inappropriate application of the 3D printers?
The students will not have free access to the printer without supervision, certainly. And this is, this printer is the first piece that we want to get in place for a maker space, I guess, eventually, which is part of our STEM initiative, hopefully our STEAM initiative, science, technology, engineering, arts and math courses that we hope to create collaboratively. When we had a, an informal meeting with our federation leadership, I think you heard Mr. Wells speak about the dreams and goals of the teachers towards that end and that there's currently a committee at the high school that's looking at interdisciplinary curriculum around that theme. This group will also be pursuing some significant grant from, grant funds from various corporations and foundations to try and get this maker space dream a reality.
Thank you.
I guess it was my next question. Can we not get this type of equipment when you tie it to a program or projects paid for in the grant?
What we're hoping is that we can demonstrate through this particular purchase that our district is focused in the correct direction and committed to creating that space and maintaining it. Typically, when you get grant funds, they're startup funds and they want to make sure that the district has the capability to sustain the efforts after they commit a certain amount. So this is our part of, of the commitment to get started.
Any other questions or comments on item number 8? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 9 to 0. Mr. Amadet's, will you take other form this evening?
I can handle other. There is one item under other. It's the nomination of a school board member for candidacy to the Allegheny intermediary unit board for a three-year term. Reading, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation for Connie Rule's candidacy to the Allegheny intermediary unit for a three-year term from 1 July 2015 to June 30, 2018.
Second.
Item 1, under other, has been moved by Mr. Amadet's and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item?
That says to 2018, Mrs. Rule, did you know that?
Are you sure you want to do this?
But we're happy that you're willing to do this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 9 to 0. Great. Any public comments that you wish to address the board on this evening? Anything at all? Seeing none, I'll move into board comments. Mr. Amadet's, I, I forget which end I'm at, but I will start here and it's the new year.
Just, just a few short comments here. There's obviously been a lot of concern with the, on parts of parents, teachers and I'm sure students, the changeover for our administrators and, and I share that concern on some extent, but in this case, you know, I've been through it before and change in this case is what I'm seeing is, is going to end up being a good thing. I've sat down on some of the interviews that we have had for our administrators and tonight we have one here that we have recently hired and I can't be happier with some of the people we're putting in, so I think in this instances, the change is going to end up being good for the district. And lastly, just on a light, you, you mentioned that the, the dog came in to read and I have a friend who does that with her dog and she brings him into the classroom and from what she reports, number one, the dogs are extremely well behaved and well-trained and number two, and most importantly, the kids really gravitate to the animal and read and she just sees these amazing things by it. So I hope that you experience some of the same things at the school.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
In the interest of effective and limited government and brevity, I have no comments tonight.
That is really unusual.
That is unusual.
Mr. Schubel?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be pleased to know that none of my groups have met this month.
That's right, they were delayed.
Before you pass me by. Okay, first of all, I wanted to welcome our new administrators and Mr. Patterson, as we said, is here this evening. This is a, a time of a little bit of turmoil, but it's also a time of opportunity to create and build on the vision that we have for our district. So we look forward to working with some new people as well as to our old friends. So it's an exciting time for us. I also want to thank the community for their cooperation yesterday. We did have a road, have a cancellation yesterday for a combined, due to the combination of weather and also the funeral or the loss of Joey Fabus yesterday. Because of the road closures, a two-hour delay would have created havoc with our buses trying to reach children. They would have been sitting, standing on roadsides for extended periods, waiting for buses, especially with the large volume of vehicles that were involved. So while it was a difficult decision, it really wasn't a difficult decision for us to cancel. And to that end, our weather makeup day is going to be April 2nd, which is the Thursday before our spring break. And finally, I'd like to thank the board for the contract extension. It was a little change in plans for me. I had planned on retiring at the end of this year, but it's hard to say no to this board and so I thank you for your confidence and I hope to serve you well in the next year and a half as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we know you will. Mr. Spicuzza?
I'm going to defer my comments as the eloc only spoken by Dr. Campbell.
Mrs. Buckley?
I just want to clarify something as far as when we were chuckling, when Connie Rule was voted on for the AIU unit board, that means a whole lot more meetings for Connie and that's why we're laughing. I just, I was concerned somebody might misunderstand why we, we were chuckling. Also, I'd like again to thank the PTO, PTA folks for all that they do. You got a piece of it tonight with a microphone, but every month we meet and all of the things that the moms and dads are doing for our kids is monumental. So thank you and congratulations to all of the folks who were hired this evening and for all of the kids that Mrs. Dr. Stark mentioned, that well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Means?
As Nancy mentioned, we suffered the loss of a student this, this past week, Joey Fabus. And even though it's tragic for somebody to die at such a young age, if his life could be measured in, in how many people he touched rather than the length of the years he lived, Joey certainly had a successful life. And it was also very heartwarming to see the way the community poured out and, and, you know, reached out to the family, so that's my only comment.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobus?
There are so many things to be pleased about in terms of the report that was given about the district and so forth. The, the deck of students connecting with the business world and our music students and all the community service that is going on with our students is heartwarming. As a former English teacher though, I am so delighted about the project called Verbalize for Victory and the recording this, the children's books. Reading is so important for our young people and we're recording children's books and taking them on DVD down to children's hospital. I can't think of a better way for the children to, you know, both be educated, hear a good story while they are recuperating. And also, I'd like to also congratulate the high school on their attempts to keep our alumni in the circle, in the family, if you would, through the Alumni Hall of Fame and the Sports Hall of Fame. I think it's a fabulous thing that you're doing to keep those connections with, with people who are, who have left Bethel Park and are out in the world and making such significant contributions, so thank you.
While we started the evening with some doom and gloom and we threw in a lot of change, that's kind of what education's all about too. I think if we aren't changing and we're asking our students to change and to grow, I think we're on the right course here in Bethel Park. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.